All right. Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 10th, and the time is 4:03 PM. 4:04, no, 4:03. We are convening at the Provo City School Board of Education meeting at 2:80 West, 9:40 North in Provo, Utah. And we'll begin with a roll call. I'm Senator Partridge, Board President.
Gina Hill's Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Megan Wagner, Board Member.
Emily Harrison, Board Member.
Devin Daly, District Administrator.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent. Thank you. And we want to welcome those right here with us today. And I want to thank our tech team and colleagues for all the work we've been doing. And we just got to talk all these things. Introduce your folks. This voice.
Here.
Yeah. Very important.
The fourth voice.
Perfect. All right. Do we have a motion to start or study session?
I move that we convene the study session.
Okay. Motion made by Board Member Harrison. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Board Member Van Wagner. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in study session. And we will begin by turning over to Melanie for our board training.
Bonnie, can you bring that up?
Congratulations. Okay. So my topic was on superintendent responsibilities and then the board's response relationship with the superintendent. So I got mine from three different places. So if you want to go to the next one. This is from the USBA Guide to Effective School Boards. The superintendent has a term of two years and is to be renewed by the board. Before meetings, we'll meet with the board, with board leadership to help establish an agenda. We'll meet with the cabinet before board meetings to present for participating in the agenda. Any questions on that one? So it's not our responsibility to ask cabinet to present the superintendent. From that same place, the superintendent should not dominate board meetings. His or her chief roles are to coordinate the preparation of the agenda and carry out decisions made at board meetings. The superintendent should not be expected to repeat orally at length what was already written and mailed in advance. However, he or she can clarify complicated matters to the public as well as the board, which I don't have a problem with. Any questions on that one? Next slide. So this is from Policy 1503. Number one, the superintendent is to serve as the board's chief executive officer. Number two, hearing employees, students, parent, and community concerns and reporting with board policies. Number three, setting an exemplary standard to promote educational excellence and work harmoniously with the board to set educational goals and objectives reflecting the philosophy of the board. Reviewing and evaluating all aspects of the district's educational programs, including facilities, and reporting any areas of concern or potential problems to the board. And the next one? This is from our handbook. This is our board's relationship with the superintendent. So we are to consult. She, the superintendent will consult the board about school operations and problems in a timely and accurate ways. Will provide data to the board so that data-driven decisions can be made. And board, the board delegates executive powers to the superintendent and relies on his or her expertise in matters of district administration and educational best practices. And last one. The board holds the superintendent responsible for administering its policies, executing board decisions, and achieving board goals. The superintendent is accountable to the board for his or her performance. The board will evaluate the superintendent each year, including but not limited to criteria such as student achievement or meeting board, in meeting board goals. The board will refrain from evaluating either formally or informally staff or other superintendent and business administrators. So, any questions? I tried to look at a lot of words. I tried to concise this a lot from what I have.
That's great.
Yep. Okay. Done that.
Actually, with the USBA right now, we're working on the handbook that you had.
Rebecca and I did?
No, the one for the USBA, the first one you referenced. And this helped me realize, we're doing that exact section. My group is, I didn't think to check our own policy on how we could improve the wording in the other handbook. So thank you.
You're welcome.
That would be helpful. Go us. We will now turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Darrell Johnson for the spring athletic participation.
That's okay. He just got, he just got into town.
Just kidding. We won't. Okay. So one of my things sent him once, so Wendy.
That's really, okay. So good. So he got all of the reports for us while he was out of town, but I forgot to tell him he was on the agenda today. So I'm like, I'll do this. It'll be fine. So we have two handouts that are part of Board Docs that, and I'll just start with Provo High. It lists all of the sports that we have for spring sports for Provo. And if you notice, again, just to remind you of the total number of school choice students, so these are students that are, that have not played and been declared eligible playing that sport at another school. So that's called a transfer student. So this tells you how many, total number of choice students came in. So we have one for baseball and one for softball. And the number of choice that came in as ninth graders, you'll notice both of those came in as ninth graders. And traditionally, we don't really see those as the same as when they're, when they're coming in as, say, a tenth or an eleventh grader, because they're committing to the school from the very beginning. And then you'll notice that there is, there was one transfer student that was not school choice for baseball, one for softball, and also one for boys volleyball. So that's pretty, like, that's, there's nothing alarming in terms of those particular numbers that are coming out there. So that's for Provo spring sports. Any questions on Provo? Talk about Timp U. So you'll notice that we have.
I do have a question.
You have?
Oh, never mind. Tennis will go on next.
Okay. Phew.
It's not on Timp U.
It's not on Timp U. It doesn't have tennis. So.
Our state champions.
Yeah. Funny. A little bit. I'm putting a note on here so I can update you on tennis.
Well, I, you know, at the very beginning, I remember Terry's message that she sent.
That's not on there. So good. One of the things, so you'll notice that we have, especially for track, you'll notice that you have more students that are coming into Timp U for choice. A majority of those coming in as ninth graders. You'll notice that we have, we kind of have a feeder program, if you will, for track that's very connected to Timp U. That is your kind of pre-high school group that's feeding students into that particular program. And they are very, very successful. Boys track, there were two total transfer students. So these are students who have competed elsewhere. You have boys lacrosse, you have one, and you have girls lacrosse, where you have one, where they were participating in sports, in that same sport in another school at a period of time. That's good clarification on the school choice. So we have those two columns. I'm assuming they're related. So number, a total number and the number that came in. So like, if you look at line three, six of the seven school choice students came as ninth graders. So that means one came in after ninth grade, but they had not previously competed in boys' track. So they had not declared their eligibility in another school in boys' track. So they would not be considered a transfer student. So the transfer rule does not apply to them. Yep. Any questions about those two reports? Just so that you're aware of, I think we're going through UHSAA guidelines and updates that have taken place. There's far more restrictions in terms of what has to be produced in terms of documentation for the specific transfer rules that are in place. Still, it's UHSAA that authorizes those transfers. So once UHSAA says that a student is eligible, unless they're told that a student shouldn't be eligible for something, that eligibility then goes to the school. And the school has no reason to necessarily challenge that unless information is brought to the school or to UHSAA about that particular individual. Even, they did update also, I was looking at their definitions, they did update the definition of undue influence. So it's a little partier of a definition stating that if you were to see, say, for example, an entire group of students, they don't define what group means, that are coming in from out of the boundary, even as ninth grade students are coming from a specific location and have ties to a specific coach, that that could be considered grounds for undue influence and would lead to an investigation at that point. So they have clarified that in their most updated version of that, of the UHSAA handbook. So Darrell and I haven't had a chance to go through that since they just updated it here in May. And so to go through all of those pieces, and then we'll make sure our athletic directors are on the same page. They do a big, I think it's a conference in August where they go over, or July where they go over all of the new requirements and updates for athletic directors so that they're aware going into the fall sports season as to what those changes, if any, there are that are going to impact them. Other questions?
I believe Terry wanted to know, these are just sports, or are we going to look at other UHSAA things?
No, because transfer rules don't apply to those specific things. If you'd like us to pull information on that, that gets a little bit harder because those individuals are not tracked through Register My Athlete. So like, if you're looking for state theater, they don't have to go through the Register My Athlete process. There's, there's no penalty for moving around. I could go to a different theater program every single year if I wanted to. And so they're not governed by those same rules. So those would be harder to track. But we can give you totals if you want to know, like, in all UHSAA-sponsored roles, how many students are participating in each of these things. We have to provide that to the state anyway, and we can provide that report to you. We usually, I think that report's usually due by June 30th, so that's something that we could provide in August so that you can see what the participation is across the board for all UHSAA activities. I mean, we've got, you know, there's any questions, so I want your attention, so.
Kudos to Terry. She's out of town, but she took the time to look through all that. I think she's watching right now, so good job to her. I think she asked a question about the students running track that are still running at the end of the season. Is that what she was asking? I can't remember.
I think so.
I thought quickly. And now, I would just anecdotally say, I'm guessing all. I mean, it's a big group of kids, and they stay really active all the way through.
And no cut sports.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. I mean, probably not, obviously not all, but a large percentage of.
The ones that, the ones that quit are the ones that are going to be like, okay, I didn't realize there was this much running.
Yeah. But the numbers, the numbers in all of the sports is based on how many people fill out Register My Athletes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. Not seeing any other questions. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number six, our various contracts we're implementing. And we'll turn that over to Jason Cox, our Deputy Superintendent Superintendent.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. We recently completed the process of going through our negotiations with all of our different employee groups. That went very well again this year. We have a really good working relationship with each of them, and so that one, I feel we're lucky there. And we work, we work on keeping that relationship. But each group was very happy with the increases, so thank you to you for, for making that effort to help them to feel supported financially in the work that they do. The one thing that was kind of across the board is the insurance costs and how that was kind of difficult this year. But again, thank you to you for the way that the school board and the school district is taking on a portion of the cost of that so it doesn't all come to the employees for the, for that increase. So again, thank you. Other than that, I, I'm not sure exactly what to share with you because things went so well.
And they haven't changed since we talked about what the results of those contracts were, so I.
But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Could you just, like, way high level summarize for the public that is watching kind of what changes we're doing? Like, cost of living?
I have that as part of the budget presentation, too.
Oh, okay.
And so if you'd like it there, or I can briefly?
It's up to you. We can skip a slide on mine.
How about super briefly?
Okay.
And then if we have more questions, we can go over there.
So all the employees get a level increase, which means that, you know, on the salary schedule, they'll move. And that move alone is equivalent to about a 2% increase for the employee. And then each group was a little different from there as far as how much they received because the state legislature granted some, some financial increase to both our teachers and our classified employees. For our classified employees, it's $1,000 for all one single FTE people. In other words, who work a full 40 hours within the week. And then, and it'll be prorated for people who work less hours than that. And then for our teachers, their increase was about a 2,000, a little over $2,000 that the legislature put in for them.
1446 for the teachers, for the legislature.
Oh, okay. 1445, 46. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're good.
I just remember going from eight to 10, so I, yeah. So thank you for the exact amount. And then beyond that, each group received an additional percentage increase to, to support them. So the administrative prophetic group received 5%. The teachers received?
Just the flat 2,000.
Oh, that's right. Theirs was moving the beginning step of the salary schedule, the $2,000. And that transfers through everybody else. So everybody receives that $2,000 increase. And classified employees, I can't remember the percentage amount.
1.5.
1.5, that's right.
That's good.
Sorry, that was a brief summary.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
What are grandfathered employees related? Two left.
Yeah. So grandfathered employees are employees who were with us before we, we negotiated getting away from, we had an old incentive program with what are called our grandfathered employees, where they would receive insurance post-retirement and, and/or an amount of money upon retirement. And so we had, we had different levels of employees in what we call grandfathered groups receiving different amounts. But over time, those groups of employees have gotten smaller and smaller because there was kind of a stop point made when you couldn't be in that group anymore. And 2006 was the latest of those stop points. And so as time has gone on, more and more employees have retired, and so we have less and less of them. So fully grandfathered employees, we have two left. We have what's called prorated grandfathered employees, which they receive just the money amount when they leave. And that group has a little over 100 people left in it.
Yeah, 100 or 104. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions about it? Okay. We'll be approving those at this meeting.
Thank you. Sorry your work.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Jason? Wow, guys. Okay, we'll turn it over to Devon for our Washington.
No, employing engagement survey.
Oh, my gosh. Yes. I'm sorry. Caleb, number seven, our employee engagement survey. I even just pulled it up on my computer. I'm sorry. I don't know. Where am I right now?
Okay. So for probably the last month, maybe month and a half of the school year, we had this survey out. It might not be the most opportune time to put a survey out. We didn't get quite the response we were hoping, but we have almost 300 responses on it. So we wanted to share that.
300 out of how many could have participated? Like, just under 2,000?
Yeah. How many employees do we have? Yeah. But we wanted to share as kind of baseline, and possibly we can go out and do it again at the beginning of next year and compare and use that information a little bit, be able to take it a little farther with that information. There are 12 questions on here, craft kind of after the Gallup Employee Satisfaction Survey. We tailored the questions a little bit to Provo, but for the most part, they're very similar to the questions Gallup uses. And as you go through the 12 questions, I think there were three where the results weren't very similar. I think questions five, and then either eight or nine, and then 11. We had some more of the disagree responses. And those ones that, that had that were the, in the past week, I received praise for my good work. My opinions seem to matter at work. And then, over the past six months, someone at work has discussed my progress with me. All the, all the other questions had, the vast majority were agree or strongly agree, and then neutral, and not many of the disagree or strongly disagree. So I don't know, was anything else you wanted to add, add to those?
I just, I agree that those three are, they're not a surprise to us to see that these are areas that we need to improve upon. We hear that, we even heard that in the employee survey about what mattered, especially to our education support professionals, where they were talking about, like, yeah, I'm a 29-hour employee, but I'm receiving very little personal feedback about the work that I'm doing. So that needs to be much more intentional in terms of how we're helping our principals and our supervisors on our operations side and our education side about, what does that look like exactly? What does it mean to get that specific feedback? How often should that be coming? Because that can be really overwhelming sometimes. And then, but I loved that people have a best friend at work. Like, they actually said that that, like, that was something that Gallup said when I went to their session at USBA, that they said if people have a best friend at work, they feel very connected to their workplace and they're less likely to leave that specific work environment. And so that actually made me pretty happy because I have lots of best friends at work. So, but we need to do a much better job of the recognition. And then the other pieces, my opinions seem to matter at work. Really hoping that with this building leadership training that we've been doing, where we're trying to help them see that we have this feedback loop of creating drafts of things, getting those teams to provide feedback, and then have our principals and district leadership team then revise based on that feedback. I would like to go out and just visit with principals more informally, not just through listening tours, but just to kind of see what's, what they're hearing from their staff members and with our assistant principals as well. And then this discussion of their progress, I think we use our formal evaluations. We need to be more intentional about when you're providing that feedback. Is it just a note? Is it just an email? Or is it a personal conversation? What does that actually look like? How could we help facilitate that? So those are things we're going to be talking about cabinet and UTSS. We'd like to do the survey again at the beginning of next year, just to see if we can get more responses. And then also disaggregate it to see if we have different responses. I, I think that, that recognition for good work is going to be a higher, a more negative feedback for 29-hour employees. I think they feel a lot more invisible in our district than our full-time employees. And that's just a hunch I have. I don't, you know, just based on what we've seen in the past. And so just getting some actual data on that and then being very intentional about the action plan. We just wanted some baseline data. And we'll move from there.
And I can disaggregate all this, but where the numbers are so low, I don't know how accurate it would be. So we figured we'd do it again, get a higher response rate, we can break it out.
Is there a way for this to give back on any questions?
It didn't, they specifically said not to do that because it starts getting into the weeds about what that is. But we do the employee surveys when we're talking about salaries, so we have those comments that come in that way. But that might be something that we could look at, like, do we need to add, just add a comment section? Now we can run those through AI, now that AI is getting so much better, and actually start to find some common themes in that.
I'm just getting Terry's questions, and I actually think, I really think it's valuable. She said, let's see, first she said she did have some employees asking for a comment box or staircase. I noticed some schools have less participation than others, so she was asking just about kind of the process of trying to recruit and maybe timing is a big piece of that. But then, just to put this communication to employees that this was the Gallup Q12 survey and why we're using this survey and that it's connected to the strategic plan. And that might be helpful because they just had that big survey that we did have a lot of people reply to, right? And so they may have been wondering, why is this different? What is this being used for? And so that might be helpful. And then she just asked if it was possible for the board to see if results were cut down by employment location. And she said, could Wendy or Jason Cox explain why you think that the location might have gotten that result? Those were just her things I was reading.
Those are great. I, I think location had a lot to do with a couple of things. I think we have some principals that are very proactive in terms of, they watch my videocast. So in my videocast, I talked about the survey. I talked about the why behind it. And I think those principals that pay attention to that, they were ones that were reinforcing that. We can add that. We do a principal's checklist every month of things that they need to do. So when we roll this out, we just need to put this on their checklist, that here are some things that you need to keep in mind so that we get a broader participation piece to that. And then the other piece that's become apparent is just even in some of the, you'll see this as we talk about some of the policies, some of the policies that got updated on May 7th. The way in which we communicated that to employees was through our principals, but then, and they're communicating that usually through an email or through faculty meetings, but through weekly notifications and then also the videocast. There are many teachers that are not opening those weekly notifications and they're not listening to the videocast. So we need to establish that as an expectation of employment, that you either need to be doing one or the other. You might not have time to do both, so pick the one that's going to work the best for you. Even on the weekly, on the videocast, I now do like a little summary of the major things that are coming out in that so they can be like, oh, I do need to listen to this. So I'll work with Caleb on how we can make that, like, this you must listen to. Like, this is really important. Because I feel like we're getting some employees that aren't recognizing that's a major way in which we communicate, and they're feeling like they're on the wrong side of things and feel a little blindsided. So we just need to establish that as, just like reading your email is an expectation of employment, following up on one of those two notifications is an expectation of employment. Those are great questions.
And that is part of a push we made the second half of this school year, trying to get direct people to those. So in the past, we've sent these out through all those, and then we'll follow up with a bunch of different emails. We didn't do that necessarily as much this year because we are trying to set those, establish those expectations, this is where you can get the information. And so that probably played into the response rate a little bit, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Caleb.
Thank you so much.
I do like the idea of doing it again towards the year. All right. Now we will move to item number eight, which is our Washington update.
Do you want to click on that picture that's attached to the agenda? I just want to kind of give you an idea. So let me just give you a little bit of a precursor to this. We hired Langen Engineering as our third party to come in and review the site design and the soil testing from, from top to bottom. They've been on site. They're asking for three additional boreings. Now, our, our challenge with that is timing on equipment. Boring equipment's about two months out. I don't want to wait two months. And so I don't know if it was my nagging or if it was.
Let's go with that.
Something that just was lucky. We'll go with my nagging because sometimes that gets people moving. AGEC, who is doing, who is also working for us, they are letting them use their drilling equipment on the 23rd to 25th of June. So we're two weeks out, which is still great. We were going to be at the end of July, so now we're there at the beginning. So I'm just going to point to a couple of areas. So these two boreings will have both a pezometer and an inclinometer inserted. So that's really for future readings. That will allow for there to be constant readings on soil saturation and whether there's water buildup. Because really, that is what caused the wall to, to drop and is that water saturation and that collecting of the water. And I'm learning all kinds of things about engineering, so this is not my new profession desire. But there will be a pezometer and an inclinometer, and both of those placed in a pezometer here on the backside of the, the backside, here's the school. This is that corner of the parking lot, so that they can do those readings periodically. So that, that will be done, that middle or the end of June. What I've also asked for is for everybody to get in the room after we have those readings and the, and the report, to go through what the, the solution is and come to an agreement and the report to go through what the solution is and come to an agreement that it's the proper solution and that it's the right thing to do before we start putting that back up. My guess is we'll start putting this back up in July. It might take a little while, it might not be done when school gets started, but we're going to do our best once we get that solution.
And by this you mean the wall, correct?
The wall. Yeah, so.
Are they also looking up on the northeast side?
So AGEC is doing all of those. So they're, they're, they're working on that. They're up there fairly regularly doing readings and checking. One of the things that's different in the two is one is a cut wall and one is a fill wall. So the cut wall generally is not as, doesn't have a stability issue as much as those fill walls do. And so that, that front of the, that side of the school where the wall is down right now, that's that fill wall where they had to put a lot of, it was native soil, but it was still moved from one spot to the other. So where the cut wall was put, that soil was put over on that southwest corner of the building. So I mean, we've had some preliminary discussions, but I mean, there's still, the conversation still is who's responsible at this point. I, we just need to get the wall up and we can deal with all of the, all of that with Hogan as we get closer to having these boreings done.
Okay, so to clarify with these three new peers, there's going to be equipment that will monitor ongoing, but it's also going to be assessing things right now to help us figure out the plan.
Correct. So the purpose of those, those gauges are to get future readings. So what they'll do is they'll put the bore hole in and then they'll fill it with the cement that is without, it's actually mixed on-site. So they don't bring like, I don't know who, but it used to be Geneva Rock. Are they still the main people? But they will mix it on-site so it's free of any kind of imperfections or lumps. And then they'll fill those holes so that it will still have those readings from below. When we met on Friday, he had some other pictures, but this is the one he sent me so at least you could get an idea. So that means I may not have much of a, of a update at our next board meeting on the 24th because they'll be in the process of doing those boreings. But through the month, as soon as we have an idea, we, I will work with Wendy on getting a board update taken care of so that everybody is kept in the loop on what's happening.
So are these boreings also looking at soil compaction besides?
They've been looking at soil compaction on, on, on all of reporting and on-site, yes. So the boring, the main purpose for the boring is to insert that equipment.
All right, any other questions?
I think you did see that we sent out an update yesterday to the WASHES community just so that, because it had been a while and we don't want them to think that we're just leaving it.
Are we putting those kinds of updates on our website for those who aren't in the WASHES community or?
We can totally do that. Absolutely. I'd answer down.
All right, we will move on now to item number nine. Devin's section.
Yes, this is the Devin section of the meeting. So this is just our annual review of the, oh wait, is the frog, oh, that's later.
This is our fiscal year 25 final budget.
So then I can bring up our, the, the presentation. So I tried to make it interesting for you. Something different.
I was hoping you were going to say fun.
Okay, it might be fun. I, I don't know whether it will be fun. I don't know that it's always interesting, Lisa, but it is. So this is our, do you mind if I stand up here? Because then I can point, that the laser pointer doesn't work very well for me. So go down to the next page. So this is our FY 24, 25. So if you go to slideshow.
She can't stand that.
Oh, right there. And then on the very left, play from start.
There you go.
Sweet, thank you. I need a stepstool or Wendy, one of the two. So this is, so this is our final FY 25 budget. So this is this current year. It has all of the current revenue and expenditures. Again, this still could change based on things that happen. June is always a little interesting for me. I have a lot of people who realize they have budget left and decide that they have to spend it all in the month of June. So that gets to be a little bit of a challenge, but you know, we're pretty, I'm pretty set with what we're doing.
Is there a reward for not spending the budget?
There is not a reward for not spending your budget, but if you overspend your budget, you get a visit from me. And I'm not sure that's always a positive for, for people. So I'm just going to point out a few things in this year's budget so you can kind of get an idea. It ties in with some of the things Jason talked about in his presentation about the contracts and some of the other things that, that we're looking at overall, then it will also be able to be addressed in the following slides when we talk about the FY 26 budget. So you'll look at the transfers in and transfers out. In, in total, it is all, it all balances because you can't have a, a transfer out without having a transfer in or else you're, you're out of balance. So some of those transfers, so a couple of years ago when we shifted some of the tax levies around, we increased the levies that are in the general fund at, that were in the capital fund. And then that, there's a transfer that happens from the, from the general fund into the capital fund to make up the difference of that revenue that was lost from the capital fund. It's just, I don't want to, I mean, it's just a shifting of where the revenue was originally to where it is now. It's not, I, I, we're moving that, so it's back to where the revenue is actually going into where it should. But it's going to take a couple of years just because any dramatic shifts in your levies now will, will create a flag up at the state and then they start having questions about why you're making significant changes between funds. So this transfer out is part of that money that we're giving to the self-insurance fund, so we're not giving a 30% increase to the employees. So, and this is coming from our, our investment interest that came in a little bit higher than what we were planning. And so, and then the other piece of this is the transfer that goes into the capital fund to make up the difference of that revenue. That covers the debt service payment for the municipal building authority bonds from 2022. And then you'll see here with the capital projects and the, and the municipal building authority, you have, this is the money that they get from the capital fund and then this is the net of what, this 2.5 million from debt service. And if we need to slow down and I explain each of them, I can. So let me go back to debt service. So debt service, we, we levy a certain dollar amount based on what our debt service needs are, okay? So that's the property tax levy, but what also goes in there are the fee and lieu. So your vehicle taxes, your personal property taxes that happen. So it's generally a little bit more than what you need, but we don't have any bonds that are callable right now. So if you, if you just keep on growing a fund balance, then the IRS says you're getting too much money, so we're going to penalize you. So we, one of the things that's allowable, which has really helped us in our budgeting, is to transfer that to, for, or spend money out of the debt service fund on technology equipment and supplies. So your computers, so a lot of our Chromebooks, our servers, all of those things can be used with that. And that's what this transfer is. And that goes into the capital projects fund because it has to be spent from debt service or capital. The state has some weird rules that don't make a ton of sense, but it, so, but that is why this is different. But when you go through the whole thing, it nets. So here's the $3 million transfer for the self-insurance fund that's going in, that's part of this. The 200,000 goes into the student activities fund to cover fee waivers so that the school doesn't have to try to come up with the money for those classes and some of the activities that they have for, in those programs. So, any questions? I'm already putting us behind. Well, I'm not behind, but we're way ahead.
Okay, so not entirely related to what you were just talking about, but I see that our expenditures are like 43 million more than our revenue.
Great comment.
So what were we intentionally spending extra on and where did it come from?
So let me, I'll run through all of them. So this capital projects fund, this is the, the rest of the tempu bonds that we issued, the rest of that phase that we just finished. Well, it is almost finished. I swear that thing's never going to get done. But that is the purpose for that spend down. A lot of those, so occasionally we'll have things that, in like June, we have projects in Westridge and Canyon Crest for the bathrooms. That's in next year's budget, but we're starting in June, so we can actually get it done before school starts. And so some of that budget shifts over and so we'll always be going into fund balance in the capital projects fund, well, 99% of the time just because of those projects that we're working on. But most of that is that tempu, the tempu. We had about $7 million left of that, those proceeds at the beginning of the year, so that's why. And your debt service fund, again, we had some fund balance that needs to be spent. The $3.6 million in the general fund, that's for some of the POs that are issued in April, May and June of the prior year, and we have to carry that over. So it's really that assigned fund balance that you'll see when we do our financial report, those things that we know we're going to use fund balance for and the carryover that the schools have. So generally, most of the time you'll see that, that be negative unless we bring in a lot more revenue and don't spend it. We're, we're not, we're not trying to hoard it, we're trying to make sure we're using it so that we can use it wisely. But this, this was money we were planning on going into fund balance last year when we started the budget process. And then same with the municipal building authority, this is the completion of Shoreline, the completion of WASHES. And so this we expect to go into fund balance. And next year you'll see that we'll add to fund balance because we'll get those proceeds from the new bond that we, that we approved in February. And then the student activities fund, chances are this number won't be this big. And it's just using money from prior donations or fundraising that programs are using, but we also add a cushion for, in the budget because we've been burned a few times by the schools because of their June expenditures, because of trips that they take. So we want to make sure there's plenty of money in the, in the budget for that. And then the child nutrition fund, that was supposed to happen. We actually had a plan with the state to use some of the fund balance that we had because our amount was too high. Does that answer your questions? Anybody else before we move on to FY 26?
And is there, like if we, are we voting on this for my need tonight or?
Nope, this one we're voting on.
So if we look at this over time, we can come to your questions.
Yep, and we'll try to do a finance committee meeting or at least you can come in and sit and we can go through everything that you would like.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Devin, finish that thought. We're voting on this by our next meeting.
24th. So all of the, all of the hearing notices have been done. You'll see it in the paper, I believe on Saturday or Sunday this week if you get the paper. And then, but it's on our website and on the public notice website. Okay, so let's skip over to the next one. So I'm just.
So now we're going to formal.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Item number 10, which is our fiscal year 26 budget.
Okay. Yep, so we'll talk about some of the limitations that we had with our, with our current budget. And this kind of marries a lot of the things that we've talked about in our community, community connections committee. And also it, it kind of brings in some of the strategic plan, just how things fit with each other. So hopefully this helps answer some of the questions. But some of the limitations that we had from the very beginning as we were dealing with the budget was we got a 4% increase in the WPU. A 4% in the, a 4% increase does not include a 4% increase across the board to all of our revenue. It's just a small portion of that revenue. And then it also trickles into things like special ed, CTE, class size. So a few items that are also funded by that WPU amount. And you know, going from that, CTE was actually cut this year. So there was an increase in the WPU because of a loss of a certain number of students over the last couple of years and they go off a December 1st ADM from the prior year. That's what caused that to be decreased this year. So the amount of revenue that that WPU increased for unrestricted dollars for the state was about $2.5 million. So that was, that was number one. That's, that's not a lot of money when you're dealing with some of the, the salary shortages that we've had over the last couple of years and things that we needed to fix. We had a 30% increase in our insurance costs. Now, as a self-insured agency, that's actually the payment of claims. And so we, they asked for a four and a half million dollar increase to the amount that we, they expect us to pay for claims. For some reason, public employers are fairly high users of insurance, of insurance. So we have some really high claims and that, that kind of trickles down into our, our stop loss amount that we pay, which is a kind of a reinsurance that we pay for that makes it so we don't pay more than a couple hundred thousand dollars for each claim. We have an insurance company that will kick in. There's a 150% increase in substitutes over the last couple of years. So, or the last three or four years, when I looked at before COVID, we were about $6, $700,000 a year. This year, we're, we're budgeted a little over 1.4 million. So it's significant when you take it a longer term, but over the last few years even, we're higher, yes.
Is that an increase in the cost per substitute hour or whatever? Or usage of substitutes by employees?
I will say yes. Both. We have a, we have a really generous leave policy within the district and, and over the last few years, it's, it's, the usage has been significantly higher. Another piece of that is we used to dock employees for personally taken $10 an hour. So if they were gone a whole day, $80 would be paid back to the district for that. And that was removed in negotiations a couple of years ago. Just because that was one of the things that teachers were really having a difficult time with and people who were not teachers, who are on that same agreement that were, did not have to get us up, but still were docked. So that was one of the things that they, they negotiated a few years ago. But you know, when you're doing that lack of the dock plus people are using leave more often, it kind of compounded the increase a little more than it would have been. Then you have, we have expensive programs and I'll just go through each of these. You know, we've got music education, we've got certified teachers in the elementary schools. That's about 1.3 million DLI. The cost of how many FTEs we have to add to make sure we've got the proper number of teachers is about 12 FTEs, which at each FTE is approximately 100,000. So that's where the 1.2 million comes from. Social workers, one at each school is generally about $2 million and that's a longer contract. And generally they have more education, so they start a little bit further down on the salary schedule. Our Utah County Health Department, our, our contract is just under a million, but they still are billing us for additional charges every quarter. Plus we have health clerks at each of the locations and that's about half a million, a little over half a million. We have SOEP. So when you look at our state revenue this year and our state revenue next year, if you look at it side by side, it'll look like a much bigger increase, but because of a couple of things. Number one, the basic rate that they set, that the state sets, it brought in a little bit more. And so every dollar that that brings in more, they decrease our state revenue. And then SOEP is the state online education program. And that, that was almost a million dollars this year that we lost in state revenue that we had to decrease because of students that were taking those classes as opposed to classes that we offer. And John Anderson's done an amazing job looking at it over the last little bit. So that number, I don't think you'll ever see the same. This year was just an anomaly and I think a lot of people are kind of coming out of that COVID situation and needing to make up all of their credits that they didn't, that they didn't finish. And then you have retiring medical coverage. So when Jason talks about the grandfathered people, one of that, one of those benefits is eight years of medical and then a stipend. And then that, it's five years of that and then three years of the, of the medical stipend at the end. And we still are paying on some of those employees that retired. And we still are paying on some of those employees that retired up to four and five years ago. So that's, it's a number that was much bigger years ago. It was usually around four to five million, but a couple of things have happened. A lot of people have dropped off, but on the backside, Medicare, the cost for that Medicare Part B has increased about 30% over the last couple of years. So we're giving and taking just a little bit. But it generally costs us for the insurance and for the, the payment that we make for those retirees, about one and a half to 1.75 million every year. So we do have, one of the things that we'll talk about as we keep going forward is you know, we're, we're asking for a couple million dollars in our, our tax increase. We need four. Part of this, part of that that we're, is I'm going to take this out of the fund balance that we have reserved for our retiree insurance that we put away, you know, 20 years, almost 20 years ago when we had that OPEB agreement drawn up. Yes.
When do we expect that to go to zero?
So we're actually sunset right now. So we will see it drop every year. I would love to say it's going to go to zero soon, but that would mean that I'm also saying I wish people would die faster. So I, that's not my goal. It's to, I want to make sure they're living. I, I love many of the people that retired that are still on these insurance plans. And so that, there are still people that are fairly young. We had people that, we have some people, and I think Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, we've got like 10 people that are still on our plan that have not turned 65 yet to get Medicare. And so we're still, now that number will go down, and so that, that poll number overall will go down as well. But it still takes some time. And I really, anybody watching, I really want you to live. So that's not, that, but that is a significant cost to the district that provides, you know, a little bit of stress and limitation to how we budget. Any questions? Okay, let's keep going. So we talked about, a little bit about the employee survey results the last time. And we talked about this with our community connections committee. About 71% of both groups, of both the certified and the classified, their top priority was salary. And we've had lots of conversations as a board about, you know, what we can do to, to increase that salary. Insurance and benefits was second. The leave and PTO was third. Class size and instructional assistance were fourth, and the support for student behavior was fifth. So when you look at it, and there's that many, and you know, second, third, fourth, and fifth were really not too far apart from each other when you look at the, the results. That's where we had to focus. Most of our energy was on that, was on that salary. And that's what we've talked a lot about, especially teachers, where we were so much, there was so much of a difference between our neighboring districts. So let's keep going. So these are some of the things that we've talked about also with our community connections committee and just a graphical representation of where we are, where we were, and where we, where we can hope to get. Okay? So this year's salary right here, that's our, that's our first year teacher salary. That's 57, 726. And our goal is to bring it up much, much higher, but a slow but steady approach is probably a little bit safer with our budget the way it is, rather than trying to, trying to match at the very beginning. There's also the, the, a little bit of, of stress and differences with the Alpine School District, the three new districts. You know, those salaries have to be maintained for the first couple of years, and then they can create their own salary schedule. So with, with our new salary, it's about a little over $4,000 per teacher that they're getting this year. So the beginning teacher salary is 6650, something right around there. So we, we have gotten over 60 with the, with the changes in the salary schedule, which is really great. At this point, it would put us right here, but every district, every teacher got that 1446. So everybody will go up to 1446. Most of the districts I've talked, I've talked to have given very small increases this year. And so it might get us a little bit closer, but at least gets, I really wanted to get over that 60,000 threshold so we could be at least in those, in that range of numbers. The other thing that we did last year was we did the longevity steps. We talked about those. We, in our negotiations, we, we will continue to do that. It won't be compounded for teachers, but it will be something that we can do for those teachers that reach that 5, 10, 15, and 20. So if you go ahead to the next one. So this is where we were for a teacher that was about, had their bachelor's plus 33 years of service before we did the longevity. So that teacher with the 20 years was at the very low end when you look at other districts. So we were at the bottom, which was one of our main concerns and why we did, why I put such a, an emphasis on making sure those teachers that had been here for a long time were, were the ones that were given those steps. So if you go to the next one, this is where they are this year, after that longevity. So we were able to bring them up, not, we didn't beat our neighboring districts, but we're closer. And that was really beneficial. The teachers were super grateful for your commitment to making sure that that, that longevity and that loyalty to the district was, was acknowledged. So let's go to the next one. So again, we did the longevity, the 2,000, the first step, which just filters through. So each, between each step is $925. And that's where we get, the regular step is 925, the 1446 to the employee salary adjustment, and then the longevity.
Remind me, with the 1446, is that ongoing or is that one time?
It depends. So the $1,000 is ongoing. The 446, if, if whatever happens with the Utah Fitzall, that second half of the teachers, or the legislative salary adjustment was tied to the funding continuing for Utah Fitzall. So if the Utah Fitzall is deemed unconstitutional and they get rid of it, teachers will possibly lose the second 4,200 plus every increase they've gotten on that over the last three years since it was implemented. So this year, it's 4,200 is the first one. That's never gone up. And then the 4,704, which makes the 8904, was the amount on the second part. This year's 446 is that increase. So that 4,704 plus the 446 would be what's lost. The, the $1,000 that was added this year would be included. So the amount would be 5,200, but I don't know that anybody is super excited about teachers getting.
You have to make up that almost 45.
Most is.
I mean, everybody across the state was discussing that.
Correct.
Or districts will have to raise taxes to be able to keep teacher salaries.
The challenge.
The legislature can make a new law that would say we're going to honor this amount we've already promised, even if we don't have that.
I, I, my sense is, especially after the response to House Bill 267, it, it likely wouldn't be seen as a very, very good thing to, to back off and say, we're going to just cut that and make districts make up the difference. Some of the districts I've talked to, their tax rates are maxed. They don't have room to, to do any more taxing.
The teachers would just take a pay cut.
The teachers would have to take a pay cut, or there would have to be some shifting and some, some increases that were provided. So, and there is good news in all of this, just so you know. There, we'll, we'll get to the good news. So. And then you have the admin. That, one of the things that Darrell did a, a study of admin administrative salaries throughout the, throughout the districts surrounding us and some of the ones that are up in Salt Lake, and we were significantly lower in those principal salaries. And I love the principals that we have, and we want to keep them as long as we possibly can. So that was one of the, the big emphasis that we did this year was increasing those admin salaries. Last year, what we did, the salary schedule was a little wonky in some areas where some, some increases were a half a percent, some increases were two, and depending on what year you were on, your increase could be one, a really small increase one year, and then a larger increase next year. So one of the things that Jason and I worked on last year was normalizing that salary schedule. So every step was an equal amount. And so then, so those steps, when someone gets that step, everyone's going to receive that same percentage. Now, in the process of matching everybody to the step, some people got a little bit more and less last year, but it's a 2% increase. So, or it's a 7% increase overall for those admin, which, which I hope shows how, how we really honor what they do and they're. Also in that is an increase in the secondary, the principal stipend that they get for the high schools. Because they are at the school a lot for those activities. You know, we require a lot of that admin supervision, and Darrell does a great job advocating for them. So, so let's keep going.
By the way, our CCC committee like cheered when we said we had kind of closed the salary gap. And most of our administrators there were pretty excited.
Yep, they, that, that, and, and with that increase, you know, that step normalization, that'll make a huge difference ongoing because some people won't get, I mean, it was literally a $500 increase in a, in one year. So it was, it was very strange. So making that, and I also, we also did this year the classified salary schedule where, again, on the bottom end of the salary schedule, they'd get like nine or 10 cents an hour, which is not a huge increase for those people that have been here forever. So we redid this classified salary schedule this year and moved people around to match where they were. And each step is now 2.5%. So that's one of the reasons why that, the COLA is a little bit less because their increases are normalized now. So they'll get a total of 4% on that, on their salaries, plus the $1,000, which is the other reason why theirs is a little bit smaller. The state money that's, that's giving them $1,000 this year, that'll be paid off at the beginning of the, well, not the beginning, but in the first half of the year. We'll help with that. So the other consideration we have are all of the capital needs that we have. So we've got our, our big ones this year, Spring Creek, the site, of the site upgrade with the playgrounds and everything. There was a lot of work that needed to be done on drainage. And so they're in the process of working on that with HVAC. So there's, you can see a lot of those projects. Those are the ones that are, that the capital facilities committee said, yep, let's do these. That's, that's why we have those meetings, is to go through the projects and have those approved projects. Some of them are just annual budgets. So every year we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on flooring. We never used to do that. You know, eight, nine years ago, we just would, would react more than we would be prepared. So when there is a school that needs, or an office that needs flooring, that's what that, that's what that comes from. And again, we do that for roofing, painting, hardscapes outside, and so electrical asphalt. So there's, we've put in a budget, an allowance every year for those things. Now, again, somebody asked the question about the balances in capital. So occasionally, those projects don't cost as much as they, as they, as we budget for them, and those just drop into fund balance to be able to react to some of those things that may come up. So. The other issues that we have capital-wise are Temp View High School, the new phase that we're working on right now. The wall repair, Wasatch Elementary, and then the security requirements. The new house bill creates a lot more requirements for us long-term. Now, it doesn't have to be done in one year, but it is, there is a timeline for when those have to be implemented by, by. Okay, so let's keep going. So our other considerations when we're working on it are, you know, there's always a textbook or a curriculum that needs to be replaced. And so that's something we have to be really mindful of when we're doing the budgets. We have armed guardians that we're going to have to start paying for this year. And that equipment amount that we pay fairly regularly, at least for the ammunition for the firing range. You have technology needs. You know, I, we're, that, that's going to be a constant now that we have moved to kind of a one-to-one device model and, and have a lot of technology needs with the, I guess, what you could call the new normal. And then instructional aids. I mean, that's always a, a, a need for people to put more people in the classroom to help, especially as you get larger classes. You know, you get three third grade classes with 28 kids, 29 kids. There's not enough to create a fourth one. But we do need to provide them with a little bit of extra help. Okay, so let's keep going. So our next step is, is truth in taxation. So taxes are the only revenue districts really have control over. It's the only way that we can raise money for our district, and that's, but we're also very mindful of those impacts to our community members. We, we want to make sure that we're not doing large increases every 10 years. That's the, one of the reasons why we put the policy in place several years ago, to do a tax increase every other year, so that we can not do anything that was large. Not 2022 notwithstanding. That one was a pretty large increase. But to, to make sure that we're, that we're being very mindful of what that impact will be on our residents. So a couple of the other things that we'll do, we're going to review programs to, to find efficiencies or duplication of services that we can avoid. And just making sure that all of our programs are necessary and really providing the data, the data that we need and the, the student achievement that we're looking for. So the increases on the salary schedules amounted to about $4 million. Part of that, again, is that, the retiree insurance that will pull out of that fund balance. Unless, of course, our insurance, our, our interest is higher again this year. But they are projecting a couple of decreases in the Fed the next couple of meetings, and so we will see those numbers drop. The budget that we have, that you'll look at now includes a $2 million increase. One of the things that's kind of exciting is this year, the valuations in Provo came in much higher than what I had, I had projected. And so the only, my only caveat on the next pages are I don't have the basic rate numbers from the state. What I have used is their maximum that they created in their Senate bill that they passed regarding the basic rate in property taxes. So if we go to the next page. So these would be our projected rates for this next, yes.
Just to slow down for a second and highlight what you just skimmed over so quickly. You found $2 million that we are not passing on to the taxpayer that we can.
Correct. Some of those expenses.
So we're trying to be very mindful of that.
Yes.
You found efficiency.
Correct. And my goal is always to make really small, the small incremental changes, nothing that's big. And one of the first questions Wendy and I get every time we have any meetings is what are you cutting? And so we look at what we've, what, all of the changes that Wendy's made in the district office. You know, after, after the ESSER funding went away and COVID kind of went off into the night, there were about 15 to 20 FTEs that we never replaced. Because we kept a lot of the schools harmless for those years of COVID because we had ESSER funding to pay for them. And then Jason and I had the joy of meeting with principals and saying, no, you really have this many FTEs. And that, that's a challenge, but we also have to be super responsible and not overstaffed just because we can. So we've been really mindful about making sure that those, that those FTEs are appropriate for the number of students that we have. So overall, yes, we have, we have cut. I, I mean, that we just, and not necessarily cut, but just taken care of through attrition. As employees left, we, those were positions that we didn't rehire. And then school, the expectation is the schools will live within the FTE budgets that we give them. And that's, that's made a huge difference. So when people ask, have you cut? Yes, we have cut. We made, we didn't give out letters saying that you're fired. It was more of a, we don't, we don't need this position. And as people retired, we did not refill them. Yes, Gina?
So when you're giving, when you're assigning FTEs, you do it, I'm assuming, based on projected enrollment?
So we start working on our projected enrollment in January. And then we go off the projected enrollment, and this is off of a 15 to 20-year trend of what those grade levels have been. And then we assign, right now, our number is 27 and a half students. So each grade level, we divide by that 27 and a half. So it's not a school-wide, it's grade level by grade level, except for secondary schools because they don't have a certain number between each class. It's just a, a population over, overall. So we take that 27 and a half, divide it, if we have, you know, if we're close, we'll round up. Or if we feel like there's going to be growth in the school that didn't have two FTEs or three FTEs the year before, then we may have to, to make some of those concessions as we go. then we may have to make some of those concessions as we go.
That was my question. Do we make, is there flexibility in the budget? Because I'm thinking about Timpinogus Elementary. Because their population fluctuates, I think, maybe more than some other schools. And I think the projection's always low. And then they end up with more students than that. But you can and will make adjustments mid-year. If there's a classroom, because last year, there was a whole classroom full of kids that didn't really have a place.
So every year, Jason and I meet regularly at the beginning of the year. I won't make any decisions until the 10-day drop has happened. So what happens is, is we have to go through that 10-day, that 10th day of school or the 11th day of school, those kids that haven't shown up to school, we drop them. Unless there is extenuating circumstances if the parents have contacted us. But generally, those students are dropped after the 10 days. If at the end of those 10 days, those enrollment numbers are still significantly higher than what we were planning on, we either, number one, determine that there needs to be another class and we will add one, which we did this year. Do you remember which school? It was, but there was an elementary school, we added one too. It's okay. This is, this is almost a year ago, so my brain doesn't reach back. Then we have, then the number two, if there's not enough to justify a whole class, so if there's five extra in each, having one class of 10 isn't really what we look for. We'll put in an instructional assistant in those classes to help take some of that load off.
And there's a process in place for Jason and you to meet with this? I just want to make sure, because there's a lot of, a lot of issues.
Jared and Jason will go out and meet with the principal pretty regularly, the beginning of school, and ask for what are the issues? And then they'll come back to me. And we'll go through the numbers. It's one of the great things about Domo is it loads that student enrollment by class every single day. And we can look, oh, wow, we have three classes of 28 4th graders. We're going to put an aid in there. Because that's a lot of kids for each of those teachers. And so we'll, we'll make those kinds of changes. What we can't do, which I wish we could, not, I mean, it's just, the accountant side of me is that when we have two classes that are really small that could be combined into one, we don't do that. So there, there does tend occasionally to be an inequity across schools. But we really try hard to make sure that those numbers. And you'll likely see some changes, adjustments in some of our procedures just so that we're not tied into those really small classes. So, yes?
Well, I was just going to ask, we still have a model of balancing sort of the needs, higher-needs students into that equation of how these are counted?
So we have the equity model that also is included with those low-income, the low English proficiency, those types of things that they've put into place. And we'll put extra FTEs in those schools that have more of a significant need than some of the others. So, yes. Megan?
No, it was. Same question, we were thinking about saving. That's why I moved on, I was no longer.
Okay, so yes, we are trying to, to go back to Jennifer's comment at the beginning. Yes, we're trying to be super mindful of the residents. And you'll see on the next one, again, I'm not trying to nickel and dime people or try to be irresponsible. I just want to make sure that what we're looking at is appropriate for what we're asking for. So our rate has actually dropped.
Would it be helpful for you as a board, like in the first meeting in September, or maybe at the all-day September meeting, to go through like where the projections were and where we landed with FTE and how that happened so that you're understanding, so that when constituents are asking you questions or teachers are asking you questions, you're like, oh, yeah, I do know why that happened. That was because of this.
Well, our elementary schools and our projections to the actual enrollment were really close. Most of them were really close. And some of the differences in the grade levels were a principal choice where they put people. So our tax rates for this next year are projected to be .006935. I will tell you, I'm super excited about the fact that this is our first time below the seven number in quite a while. So, and a lot of that is that increase in our valuation. We went from 9.9 to 11. almost 1. Here's my next exciting thing is when we get those new, the areas that we're working on, getting the, onto Provo City School District rules instead of Alpine School District, those rates will drop even more because we'll have more additional valuation. Now, whether that will come across as growth or not, I don't know what the county plans on doing. I would imagine so because it's new property that's added, which is great. That can help drive that. And you can see almost every rate dropped. The only one that didn't, the two that didn't, is the state set rate of .001484. And before Terry can remind me that I lied about whether that was going to change, I'm not telling you this is final because they haven't given us the rate yet. But the law made the maximum 1484. So it will not go above this. The only thing that might go above it is some numbers that I got from the state today doesn't jive with this, the charter school levy that they've set for us. That might change a little bit, which could put us above seven, which would be really irritating, but I don't think it will, so.
So this fiscal year starts in less than a month. When do they give you final numbers?
They have until Friday to give us basic, the basic rate. So they give us about five days to actually approve our rates. Now, that, the basic rate, regardless of what it is, it doesn't at all affect our rates, our rates that we get and our revenue that we get. That basic rate drives that, the local portion of our WPU. And so if there's an increase in that, it just is a decrease in state revenue. But so, so far, what we're looking at is a 006935, which is great. And overall, and we'll go through that on the next page, that, that's, it's a win, I think, for us that, I mean, we could go back to the, to the rate or even a little bit lower than that to capture the full $4 million. But I still think that the review of programs and efficiencies is still a valuable process. Any questions about rates? And we'll go to the next page, which actually has actual information about homes. So let's go to the next page, Bonnie. So down here, you'll see, this is an average home value. So average home values went up .094% average in the county. Now, I don't know what that's going to look like for an individual home in Provo. Provo might have gone up farther than that, so I don't know. But I'm going off of what the state or the county average is. Agricultural is the one that got the big adjustment this year. So 2.5% increase in agricultural property. And then business was 1 point, almost 1.5. So businesses will be hit a little bit harder than, than homes are. But, but, you know, that, that's part of doing business in cities. And so we try, again, we're trying to be mindful of not just the residents, but the businesses that are here too. So when you look at this year, this is with the .094% increase of the valuation. Again, you have the 55% exemption, well, the 45% exemption. Only 55% of your home is taxable. And it actually has a decrease of $55 a year, still with that increase in our revenue that we're asking for.
I don't know if you know this number. How many of our, like, what percentage of our homes in Provo would be at the 55%?
All of the homes. So even second homes count for the.
Second homes, but they have to pay 100%.
Not anymore. So they, the 55%, there's, it depends on who's living in it, I believe. The last time I said that the second homes didn't count, somebody at the county was at the meeting and said, no, the second homes do count for the 55% exemption.
Really? I just had to sign a paper.
And if that's not the case, then I was right to begin with and he was wrong. I can say neener, neener, neener the next time I see him.
I was just curious, like, because I hear of so many rentals that are in some areas. Like, I'm just curious to know, like, what percentage are actually?
That is a great question, and I don't have the answer to that. I don't know what our percentage. We do have a high percentage of rentals. And so, I could ask. But I was corrected at the last meeting. But I still am a little leery of that correction just because I'm not sure that that's 100% true. But either way, the, it still is overall, if they were taxed at 100% this last year and taxed at 100% this year, that total amount that they're paying would likely be less unless their valuation went higher than what the county average is. Jennifer?
Could you clarify, as we're looking at this 2026 year on here, are we talking before or after that we're asking for $2 million additional?
This is after the tax increase that we're asking for.
Okay.
So.
But we are still going through a process because.
We still have to because those valuations have gone up. And so when that valuation goes up, they just decrease the rates. They don't leave rates the same, they leave revenue the same. So our revenue stays the same regardless of whether people's homes went up a ton or just a little, or they went down. The rate, the rate is based on the revenue that we need based on the prior year and any growth that we received. And the other piece of that is, is we did have an RDA drop-off this last year. So instead of having that amount that's withheld every year, that's now coming to the district.
So the truth in taxation essentially is not allowing those rates to drop to some extent.
Right.
We're not having the rates that were really high. But we're like, to capture that $2 million.
So we're, to capture the $2 million. So I took what the revenue was that they, that was no, no increase in the rates. And I added the $2 million and then kind of played with the amount between capital and the board so that I could decrease that transfer we're constantly making into the capital fund a little bit this year and then a little bit more next year. So one of the bills that was passed this year was a hold harmless provision on our, on our board levy. So the long and short of it is, is the state is making it really difficult for districts not to do truth and taxation. Because if that, if the rate drops and you're not increasing your revenue to match it, your, the revenue they figure on is, is lower. And so it makes it, makes, moving anything out of that basic rate now, very challenging. So the two rates that are changing that we're doing the truth in taxation on that are the big ones are capital, which will help us, you know, deal with some of those capital needs, which is where all of the increase will be in a couple of years when we do, for the municipal building authority bond. And our basic rate to keep our revenue at the same level. So that, that's one of the issues that they did. And this was, this was, this bill was in response to what happened a few years ago in our taxes where we kind of moved the levies around.
Yes, okay.
So how far behind are we now because I've been speaking for too long?
Well, we actually have five minutes left from our.
And I only have, I think I have one more, well, a couple more slides. Because I just tied things in our, in our strategic plan to some of those things in the budget that also are part of those expensive programs that we're talking about. So, but first of all, this is the full budget for this next year. You'll see that we're projecting an increase. And that's mostly because we have the proceeds for the bond that we'll bring in this next year, which is really nice because then we have another year before we have to do anything with tax. Because we were going to have to do something next year, start paying it. But we were going to use the interest from the proceeds. Now, we just have that, we've bought ourselves an extra year where we have one less year of interest that we'll have to pay. And then that, and we'll still have the same result where our bonds will fall off. And the GO bond will fall off and then we'll add it there to the capital. So, anyway. So all of the increases that we talked about a couple of years ago with the, or last year when we were talking about the bonds, that amount per year will decrease even more now because of that increase in our valuation. So overall, the total, total budget is $260 million. When you go to the next page, this all, when you look at this current year and now, the total budget has dropped, but that's because you'll see these purchase services. This is our construction. This is what happens when you build three schools at one time. So it, it, it makes it so it does look like things that, something's more important than salaries just because it's so close. But what, what you'll see is it drops and then it'll draw, it'll go up again because we've got the new section of Timpview that will start after this fiscal year, this next fiscal year. And so you'll see that kind of fluctuate, but that's mostly the building costs. So let's keep going, we'll be fast. So when you talk about some of the things that our goals are, so I just did an over, kind of overview of our three main goals, academic achievement. So part of that, part of what we're doing, I mean, you can count pretty much everything that we're doing in the district and what Wendy does in their academic achievement. That's really our main focus. But some of the basic things are instructional coaches. That has made a huge difference on, on teaching the teachers how to look for those items that need, where the needles need to be moved. Then you have the high-quality textbooks and curriculum. That's, that's a pretty big expense to the district. But it's also really important to make sure we have the materials for the students. CTE teachers and supplies. Again, you know, that has been, that funding has been cut this year, but that's just because there's a decrease in the number of students enrolled. Regular professional development for our teachers, that also helps with that academic achievement. Avid, the emphasis on highly qualified instructional assistants and teachers. Again, that's tied with our salary increases. You know, as we get our salaries a little bit more normalized with other districts, those really good teachers that we've brought in and trained from the time they were hired will stay and be able to create a little bit more of a rhythm. And then the teachers and principals. So as you're looking at all of that, that's really our focus. And everything that we do pretty much goes with the academic achievement in some way, shape, or form. So let's keep going. Then you have wellness and safety. And that's where we talk about social workers and behavior specialists and our student services department that does so much to deal with that safety and the wellness in students, our nurses and health clerks. Again, we have our county health department contract and that. But that provides for that wellness and safety within our students. Our maintenance and construction. Our, our maintenance department's goal is to make sure all buildings are, look great and are safe for the schools, or safe for the students. PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention, right?
Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, you got it.
Ooh, look at me, I'm an accountant who knows acronyms that are not in accounting. So that's another thing where, where that's made a huge difference in some of the schools. And then, again, our guardians that will be and our family advocates. So these are just kind of a high level of things that I could think of with just a few minutes of what we're doing and what we focused on in our budget on these, on these goals. And then the last one, so stewardship of resources. Again, we're trying to be really mindful of, of our residents and making sure that as we're, as we're doing the truth in taxation process, that we are not trying to get windfalls. We're just trying to get what it is that we need to meet our operating expenses. But you've got our salaries and our benefits. We've got our communications department and the newsletters that they put out and podcasts and videocasts. Domo, that creates a lot of ability for us to have more transparency in our data. The community committees, that's, say that 10 times really fast. And our professional development on our schools. Again, I mean, you have our HR and my finance staff. That, that is, that goes a long way in that, in that stewardship of resources, making sure that we're taking care of our public money and our state money well. So any questions? Did I get most of them right, Wendy?
This is great. For truth and taxation, usually we get a little thing from the county thing. These are what are going to do. And it says, this is when we're going to have the truth in taxation.
Yep, and it will this year. So the county already has our date. So I had to give them our date back in May of when we were, well, actually, I gave it to them back in March because we compete with Provo City. They have their meetings the same day as we have ours. So I wanted to make sure we slid in there and got our spot. So we, we have our spot there for the second week of August. So that will be on there with, the next thing I have to do is provide the revenue and what we're doing with it. And the county will then send out those letters to all the residents with their valuations and their property taxes with the change and without the change. And that will go out the middle of July. I think they have until the 10th to get it out. Well, I think it's the 15th because they say by the time they mail them on the 15th, the pioneer day, the day after pioneer day is when, generally, when they get all the angry residents calling. Yes, Lisa?
So I just want to check my understanding then that we are intending to have this truth in taxation, hearing and hear from people about this. And though the rates, some of the rates will raise, the amount people will pay may lower.
So the overall rate is down. So the overall rate is down. It, it's down three and a half percent.
Right, but we still have to vote to raise some of the levies.
Correct, because what happens with the valuation going up, all our rates lower.
Right.
And then we have to increase those new rates, which are still lower than what we have this year, so.
Okay.
And, and the amounts are based on each individual homeowner's valuation. So I'm going off of average.
Yeah.
I'm going off of what the county's reporting as the average residential increase throughout the year. So everybody's, if a valuation goes up much higher, they won't see that $55 decrease. They'll see a smaller increase than what it would have been.
But it's not gonna be significant.
It shouldn't be significant. No.
So we will approve the 22nd budget in August as well as do the truth in taxation.
Correct, so we will approve the tentative budget. That doesn't have to be part of the hearing. The part of the hearing, the hearing is for the FY25 budget and tentatively approve the FY26 budget, which then pushes forward the truth in taxation.
That will happen in the meeting in June?
Yes, June 24th is our budget hearing.
And then the truth in taxation will be the first board meeting in August?
And I wanna say it's August 9th.
12.
12th.
I just looked.
Oh, thank you. August 12th and it will be at 7:00 PM out in the PDC. So. All right.
Thank you.
Any questions?
This is great, thank you.
Was the information helpful and different?
Yeah.
I would love to make it fun, I just, I start talking and it's not very fun.
And if you come up with more questions, we've got two weeks to send those to Devon and those answers will reach out.
Okay.
All right, we'll now move on to item 11, which is also for Devon to talk to us about the fee schedule update.
You're up, oh yeah. I can do that from, I can do that from my seated position. So all of this is on the fee schedule is the chain, the adding of the online education fee for term classes. So just as a really brief overview, the reason we're adding this is because one of the things that we can reject those classes if it's a grade replacement or a class that's already been taken or a class that doesn't fit within their graduation plan. So today we have a student who only needs half a credit of a math elective and a quarter credit of something. There was not one of, but they requested six classes in SOEP just for fun, just, well, I'm not, that, that decreases our WP, we don't have to, that doesn't fit their graduation plan. Their graduation plan is a half a credit of math elective and then a quarter credit of something else. So we, we don't have to say yes to those. What we do have to say yes for are original credit and plans for early graduation. But what happens on the early graduation, there's two things that have to happen. The student has to meet with the counselor to determine that they are on, on a track for early graduation and there is a box that's marked in Power School that, that says that. Then we are given more WPU for that student to make up that difference. So they're, they're, they're loading their WP that we would have had their senior year into the year that they're taking all of the classes. And so this fee is for those parents who say, but I really want them to be able to take these classes. And that's about, some of the classes are a little bit more expensive than that, but it's an average of about $150 per term that we're charged.
They can still take them, they just.
They can take them, but they'll have to pay for them.
So this is with like the credit recovery that they sent out the email for, the summer credit recovery?
Summer credit recovery was through our e-school. That, so that credit recovery is a grade replacement or taking a class they've already taken and failed. So that's one we don't have to say yes to, but some of the parents really want them to be able to do it through SOEP. What we're doing is just providing a way for us to recoup some of the funding that we lose when they take an SOEP class.
So this is, clarify then, if they choose to do it through ours, it's free. If they choose to do it through you, yeah, that one.
So.
SOEP, thank you, then it's $150.
Correct. Yeah, this is just for the grade replacement and addition, just if they've already taken a class, which is still a grade replacement. And then the other fee on there, we, we just combined several fees. We've talked to Nate and Daryl about it's a little easier to do a per test fee of a certain dollar amount, up to a certain dollar amount, rather than trying to list every single test that they could possibly take. So it's a one test fee that provides that, that is that fee. So there, the one that was approved before had a rise test fee and an associated test fee and, but what was missed was some of those, the bilingual tests and some of those that, that we needed to have a fee for, for those students who are, don't belong to the district but wanna come in and take the test. So those are the only two changes on that fee schedule.
Okay, and we'll be approving this at the business meeting tonight.
Correct, today. Okay.
Okay, now moving on to item 12. Devon, it's your last one. Fraud risk assessment.
Uh, this is just our annual review of the, they have us do a checklist of what our risk is for having fraud within our district. We've done a really good job putting together internal controls and policies that, that really mitigate a lot of those concerns. One of the questions is, is whether you received your training and so within four years of being elected. And so I think right now the only person I don't have a certificate for is Emily, but I have three years to be able to get that from her before we're not in compliance. But I have all of yours from a couple of years ago when we, when we made a, a big push to get that done. Whether or not we have controls in place for cash and segregation of duties on, on cash handling as opposed to bank reconciliation. So we, we work really hard on making sure that that is all within what we're working on, so.
Okay. So summary is who passed?
Yes, yes. We have actually a perfect score.
I know. We are A students.
We are, we try to be A, I am a little bit of an overachiever. I, I like it, if I don't get an A plus, it's, it's a problem. So, I mean, there are always things occasionally where, where we may have to, but if we're above, I think it's 60 points less than what we currently have, then we're still not a risk. So we're still good even if we're not perfect. Thank you.
But for now, we're perfect.
For now, for today, we're perfect.
And then we have to approve this tonight?
We don't have to approve it, you just have to review it. But it is, I think I do have it on the.
It is on the.
Yes, it is, so.
Just accept?
Yep, we just accept it.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, Devon, you can take a break. Okay, we're now moving to item 13, which is our second reading, first apology, so I turn it over to Superintendent.
Okay, I'm right on schedule, so if we get behind, it's all me. I'm gonna take over the screen, Bonnie.
Got extra time, isn't it?
Sorry, didn't cover any of our extra time.
No.
Great.
I appreciate the budget review.
Okay, so I created a summary, I did load this into four docs today that just kinda shows you, it's probably gonna be more helpful actually for the policies on the first reading than on the second reading. These are pretty quick to go through. Policy 1455, we've already talked about, this has been on the web page, we have had no feedback about it. This is just basically establishing kind of the guidelines that go into place as we're looking at boundaries and states that a boundary study has to occur at least every five years since the implementation of the prior boundary process. We're understanding that that implementation may take up to two years. And then we are just, we take into account enrollment and capacity, proximity, transportation, access to programming, all of that's in section three. And that we do in lines 87 to 88 state very clearly that not every program will be available in every neighborhood school. We are really trying to go for effectiveness and efficiency, but providing a fair and appropriate education for all. We still do building capacities every year, that's in alignment with our open enrollment policy. And so that doesn't go into effect of changing boundaries, but does tell us whether or not a school is going to be open or closed to those permit applications. It also outlines what happens if there's an emergency situation, like say a building got flooded or something and we had to move students to other locations. And then noting that any permanent adjustments would have to be made following state law and our policy if we're gonna make those permanent. No public comment so far, I don't believe so. Caleb usually forwards this, those to me. And so our recommendation is to go ahead and adopt in business meeting, but I'm open to questions or suggestions or ready to take notes. And so is Shawna. She's my note taker.
I have Terry's question.
Yes, please.
And it says, is there an update on if the small school policy needs to be updated or are they made because of the investment policy?
I don't know the answer to that. But probably, it probably does need to go before a policy committee.
Okay.
I'll put that on policy committee.
We should just look at it.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions on that one?
Okay.
Terry, you're watching, I'm trying to ask you questions.
Yeah, Lisa's doing a great job, Terry.
I'm checking the comments, I'll get you.
Good job.
Put your way in, Terry.
Okay, policy 1700 is a compensation and benefits for board members. It is an update to our current policy. We're moving board member compensation from $480 a month to $750 a month and board leadership would receive an additional $150 a month. This is based on, as Devon and I were talking, we feel like each board member is spending at least 50 hours a month, at least, obviously quite a bit more. And so this compensation aligns with our hourly employees that are at our entry level. We also then are putting into the policy that when we do have an increase in, in salary for those entry level employees, the same increase would go into effect for board members and that we will do a review of board compensation every five years. Terry suggested, and I added this, lines at the end, 27 to 28, that we could use the Community Connections Committee to provide input every five years as we review that. Also states the district's covering medical and dental insurance costs and allowable expenses that are related to board duty assignments. And our recommendation is that we, that you adopt this policy in business meeting. Questions?
When would that go into effect?
July 1st.
And the budget includes that?
All right, policy 3330, this is a policy, this is an update to a policy that we actually approved in February of 2024. It brings the policy in alignment with HV77 and the Utah Code, we have cited both of those. It's on line 68 that you will see where it states that only display, that these are employee expectations, they will only display flags in accordance with that state law. We didn't list what all of that was because we felt like it's linked there. It, for the public to know, it basically bans a rainbow flag from being displayed in a classroom. And so, and then we added, we have a procedure that's trying to help parents where if they feel like there's a violation that's happening where, where an environment isn't feeling inclusive to a student, the process that they would go through. We did add on lines 54 to 57, at any point the parent or constituent with a concern may report the issue to the public education hotline and created that link there. We always prefer people to just work with us and, and sometimes it's a misunderstanding or miscommunication, but obviously this is a point that USBE and the legislature have set up and so we wanted to make sure that that was included in the procedure. So our recommendation is to adopt the updated policy with that accompanying procedure in the business meeting as it does align with the state law that went into effect on May 7th.
I just wanna make the comment about that. I, I just want the public to hear that when we talk about people, they can feel that this policy is not being followed and, and your first, I hope, inclination would be to go and speak directly with a teacher or with a principal in a building. That's not just, I don't like what this teacher is doing or about whether or not you feel like they do have a symbol that everything is not appropriate in a classroom. It's also if you don't feel like your child is being included and safe in a classroom or that they feel like they are included as learners in that classroom. That is, that is just as important to all of us. I just want people to know, please go see your teacher, please speak with your principal. If there's ever a reason where a child does not feel like that environment or a parent doesn't feel like that environment is inclusive of that child, then we also wanna know because that's what this policy is really there for, it's to keep, it's to keep the classroom environment what a place of safety of the alumni.
And that's why we stated it as an inclusive learning environment, to, to make sure it is that space for all kids. Policy 4200 includes a couple of updates to our electronic device restrictions. You'll notice on lines 85 to 88, it does allow schools to make a policy that is more restrictive than our district policy. This would traditionally only apply to a high school who's trying to restrict cell phones basically bell to bell. If there are expenditures that are related to the expansion of this policy, the school would cover those additional costs. And then lines 122 to 124 add the clarification that these restrictions apply to all class sessions, including study halls and teacher office aids. I've actually had PE teachers ask me like, can the kids have their AirPods in and their phones on them while they're running? And it's like, no, it's classroom instruction, like that's not supposed to happen. So just trying to be really consistent in that. So our recommendation is that we adopt the updated policy in the business meeting. I appreciate that people feel like they can bring issues to us and that we can review them and that we're flexible enough to keep making it better and better so that it needs to be the first.
I do have a question.
Do you?
Based on what you just brought up with PE, do each, if they don't have the, their phone on them, do they, do all students have a place to securely put their phones during that time?
They should, they should have a locker that they're putting their phone in.
They're not running with their backpacks and their textbooks either.
No.
Right, so, but they do have a secure place.
They should. And I don't know of very many individuals that would be upset if in that, in those particular instances, the phone is on the person as long as it's not being utilized in the construction. All right, policy number 5045 is salary supplements for highly needed educators. This is the policy we had to put in place because the state law changed where the state was basically stating that they would identify the high needs areas for these salary supplements. They had identified science, math, K-12 and, excuse me, science, math, secondary and then special ed K-12. They have now left that to the LEAs to decide that and we have decided to continue that. So, and we have to do that every single year. So we put into the policy that that would be determined by April 1st. It's, that's the latest that that would happen. We did include, you'll notice in state law it has a definition of base pay, which is found on lines 37 to 38. They just put that in there because they wanna make sure that the district understands that we're paying the compensation that's tied to that particular supplement in terms of benefits and those pieces. But if for some reason we change what those high needs areas are, that salary is not guaranteed, it's not part of the base contract salary. So it, it is reevaluated on a yearly basis. And so that's clarified, I believe in lines 80 to 81. And so it's subject to the teacher's continuing qualification as an eligible teacher each year semester or quarter. And it is, it is established by the Board of Education plus all of the benefits. And then you do not continue to receive that amount as part of their base pay if the Board of Education changes the high needs areas identified for the following school year. That's always a hard point for teachers that sometimes those things can change. We didn't receive any feedback on this policy on the website and the association, it was sent to the association and the comments were that they were okay and it does align with state law. So our recommendation is to go ahead and adopt that policy. The last policy for our second reading is policy 5055, which is creating the definition of a teacher leader. It allows, it really is a policy that's allowing a district to basically pay a teacher more if they're designated a teacher leader, that you could create a formalized process by what, by how that happens. You don't have to create teacher leaders, but it allows you to do so. It lines out their requirements in lines 11 through 30 and notice that the teachers have to have an effective or highly effective rating for at least two years prior to being given that designation and they can never not have that rating while they're a teacher leader. We did.
I have a question about that, sorry. Who gives those ratings, how do they get an effective or highly effective?
From the principal.
Okay.
Yep, that's true, their evaluation process, great question. It, we also struck the line because in some districts that are really small, some of these teacher leaders are almost pseudo administrators, like if you're thinking about a place where a teacher's also a teacher on special assignment, might be an administrator as well as a teacher leader, then they might. might be an administrator as well as a teacher leader, then they might be in a supervisory role. We do not want our teachers to be in supervisory roles over other teachers. That was a point of contention also for the association. We are, we want to make sure that, we put in the policy that they can be compensated. We do compensate individuals that are like on our building leadership teams as been part of our practice or department chairs or different assignments, grade level team leads. Eventually, we would like to see that our PLC leads in our schools and our building leadership team teachers would be able to secure this designation as a teacher leader. Right now, we're not quite in that place because we're not assured that every single individual that's serving on that team meets all of the qualifications, but that is the goal within the next couple of years to ensure that that is. The feedback that I received from the association was they wanted to know if this was an application process so that, that a teacher could apply to be a teacher leader and to be on these leadership teams. It really is not. In line thirty, it states that the principal designates who these individuals may be. So it's not an application process, it's the principal that's identifying those particular individuals.
Can I say a question about that then? If a teacher does have high ratings and is interested though in this kind of a role, it seems like you would hope they would feel like they could approach a principal that would say.
For sure.
You know, hey, just so you know, I would really love an opportunity to serve them.
I'm also going to tell you, if I have a teacher who has a highly effective rating, I'm probably beating on their door and asking them to be in that particular situation, for sure. One of the things that we talked about in our building leadership training, especially with our administrators, is we talked about that the individuals that are serving on those teams need to be the most exemplary instructional leaders in the school. So not just the powerhouses in the school, not just the loudest voices in the school, but they are the ones where you would want to take other teachers to go and watch the instruction that's happening in those classrooms. Those are the individuals that need to be identified on those teams because they're the ones that are understanding what instruction needs to look like. And then we didn't receive any feedback online, so anyway. Any questions on second readings? Sweet, are we ahead, kinda maybe? Oh, I'm just so excited.
Can I just say, I've gotten good feedback about the teacher leader stuff.
Oh, good, we'll appreciate it. Good.
I'm glad to hear that.
I'm one minute ahead? Well, this one's gonna, this one's gonna throw us right for a loop. Okay, that's good.
We have plenty of time.
Okay.
Everything we just covered, our second readings will be voting on who approved it or is not. All right, now we're moving officially to item number fourteen, our policy review of first reading.
Okay, so this is fun. So this is the policy everybody loves to talk about. This is policy fifty-two eighty, which is disciplinary action, orally termination, suspension, and non-renewal. There were updates from the state. So what we did was we sent the, the updates from the state out to the association and their members provided feedback then. I combined those two with the current policy so that it made sense, took it to policy committee, and then talked with Kristy over PEA about some of those issues. And she felt better about some of the language changes that we put into place. But I have an idea about making sure that our employees are feeling pretty confident about this moving forward, so I'll get through that. Everything that's in blue in this policy is basically new or, and we changed it a little bit because some of the definitions and things were in the procedure. Our policy committee decided that that should go into the policy itself. And so, and then I'll talk about what we actually put into the procedure when we get to that particular place. Lines seventy-five to seventy-seven, I realize that they're in there twice, so I'll, I'll make sure that that's corrected. One of the things that the association was concerned about was they were talking about what is defined as successful completion. Does it just mean I survived? Does it mean like I'm still upright? Like what does that look like? So we put, it's defined as an effective or a highly effective rating for a career employee. This is not for a brand-new teacher, this is not for somebody who's provisional. And we put that into place there. We did state, and this is in accordance with state law, that the district can extend the provisional status of an employee if they are provisional up to an additional two years. If the provisional employee starts after the beginning of the school year, that school year does not count towards that provisional status. Kristy asked a question about interns, and I believe under state law, an intern cannot count, you cannot count the interns' year as their first full year of teaching. It has been a point of contention for many of our interns, but just how state law is set. So that.
They don't have a license yet, so it can't be counted.
So it can't be counted because they're technically not a licensed educator. See, I knew Jason would know what the exact wording was.
They do get counted towards retirement.
But that's right, okay. So that's probably what we need to emphasize with them is this is still going towards your retirement, so this is good, but. And then also, we kind of talked in policy committee about why would you extend provisional status? Like if somebody isn't doing a good job, but like after three years, why would you think that after two more it's going to get better? The example that I used is let's say an employee has a particular conflict maybe with a principal, and so their rating isn't as high, and let's say we move that particular individual to give them a fresh start. We could extend that provisional status to see if maybe a different, maybe, maybe a Title I school isn't for that person, but we don't want to lose that individual to education overall. So it gives us a little flexibility to find the right fit. And let's see, I'll go to lines eighty-five to one hundred. Oh, this was a section that was pretty controversial for the association. So when you take an employee and you move them to a different assignment, under state law, they revert back to provisional status. Technically, it's if that assignment is significantly different than the one that they've had prior. Now, what the state model policy suggested is anytime it's a different job. So let's say you go from a social studies, a tenth-grade social studies teacher to a seventh-grade special ed teacher, that you would start them over in provisional status. The association had concerns about is that going to discourage people from going into high needs areas? I really feel like in those particular instances, teaching is probably teaching. Granted, I understand that levels are different, but we have other ways that we can evaluate a teacher and move them out of the system if they're not performing at the level that they need to. They don't necessarily need to stay in that provisional status. However, if they're moving, say, from a teacher to an instructional coach or a teacher to an assistant principal, they're now taking on a supervisory role, they do need to go back to that provisional status because that job is so different from what they were doing prior. And so, so we struck that language, you'll see on, I think if my eyes are right, it's like around line ninety to ninety-two, yeah. That that language was struck because of her concerns about that. I feel okay about that. It's not required that that piece be in law, so. And then as we move along, I'm sorry, this is very long and I can't even make it sexy and exciting. It's just not going to happen. So line one fourteen is about provisional contracted employees. Notice that it says circumstances under which an employee's provisional status may be extended include but are not limited to, it had originally said a less than perfect score. Like nobody's going to get a perfect score in an evaluation, that's silly to me. So we put an emerging or minimally effective or not effective score on the formal performance evaluation, and that's after the third year. So, so we understand that there's going to be teachers in their first or second years that might still be getting that emerging evaluation score, but that by the end of their third year, they should be at an effective rating if they want to continue their employment. And then it said receipt of a complaint of concern. And we're like, no, we don't just non-renew because one person complains. So that was creating angst for individuals. So we put documented series of complaints or expressions of concern from parents, coworkers, or members of the community about their professionalism, performance, or character. And then the others are declining student enrollment or maybe there's a particular program or budgetary concerns. Kristy did respond back and state that she felt like that those language changes were appropriate and okay. We also added that lines one twenty-three is about an employee who has experience in another state or district then is hired by Provo City School District. They at least have to remain provisional for at least one year. But total, any employee has to be provisional sometime in their career for a total of three years. So let's say they leave and go have kids or they do a different career, then they come back to teaching. They would stay one year as a provisional employee. Let's say they taught five years prior, they'd be one year provisional, and then based upon a successful evaluation, then the, then the supervisor can move them out of that provisional status. Lines one thirty, we had to change the, the term classified to education support personnel. That is the new state terminology. We will have to go back and review, policy committee will have to review the classifications of employees. That's in a separate policy. We'll make sure that all of that aligns with this particular policy. And then we have temporary employees, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Contract service providers would be, somebody asked a question about specifically on line one forty-six. Let's say we contract with a company like Playworks or something that comes in and they provide recess aids. Those recess aids, even though they're hired by an outside entity or it's just like our substitutes, they still have to follow all of our district policies. And if they're not following those district policies, then they can be terminated. They don't have all of the protections that our career employees do. Line one fifty-six talks about extra duty assignments. Note that whenever someone is being assigned, when I say coach, I'm meaning like an athletic coach or an advisor. Those are an extra duty assignment, those do not, you do not get career status in that. You don't have a right to those positions at any point in time. Those contracts are renewed on a yearly basis and they can be terminated at any point. The same thing, lines one sixty-four, we clarified on employees who sell their preparation period that this is considered a temporary assignment. There is no guarantee of that continued, of that continued money and that continued ability to sell their prep from year to year.
Out of curiosity, what is the pink? So those ones are pink?
So if it's in pink, I have to remember why I put some in pink. I have to think about this for a minute.
If it's not important, it's the one.
No, the pink is based on feedback, we added clarification, that's what it was. It was a change based on feedback.
Okay, thank you.
I had to think about that for a minute because this didn't print in color, so I don't even know what's going on there, so. Lines one eighty-nine to one ninety-five, really what you're seeing happen there is you're, you're understanding that dismissal or termination, you can dismiss an employee for cause or for unsatisfactory performance, and the processes are different and the requirements are different. And so it's trying to establish that with those definitions, and we'll get more into that in just a minute. Lines two oh one through two fifty-seven are depressing because that's a list of all of the things that you can do that. Those would be termination for cause. Those are also reinforced in policy fifty-ninety, our code of conduct. And so we just combined some of those pieces that were in fifty-ninety. Some of the things were not included in the, that were in the model policy were not in our original policy. So we made sure that we had all of that covered pretty clearly. Lines two sixty through three eleven, this is termination for unsatisfactory performance. This does require a due process, and this is part of a, for a career employee. So note that if there's something that's happening with a particular employee where they're not meeting the requirements of their job, it has to be documented. They have to have met with the employee, and then they also have to put them on a plan of assistance. Now, it doesn't mean that, that the employer has to do all of the things for the employee. The employee is given resources and the employee has to take advantage of those resources. So for example, I could put somebody on a plan of assistance and say, you need to be working with the instructional coach on this specific item, and you have this many days to demonstrate your ability to do that. I'm not going to go in and monitor that. It's going to be that teacher's responsibility to reach out to the coach and to work with the coach and to get proficient on that. It's also not the coach's responsibility to make the teacher do that. So there's a piece of this where the teacher has to do that.
So a couple of questions on this specifically. Number one, is there a training, like do, is this new enough that people need to be trained? Like is it principals, I'm assuming, that will be doing this?
Yeah, we've done plans of assistance forever, that part's not new.
Okay, and do, does our district have forms that they fill out or is this just something they make up?
Yeah, we, we call an HR, and HR works.
They work with us directly. We have, we have kind of a standard form that we go over with them, or we don't share that out until someone works with us directly.
Okay, and is this process considered burden, everything's burdensome in my opinion, my age, everything. Is it overly burdensome? Is it difficult, like I feel like maybe we don't utilize this the way we should? Is it?
Quite a few people who do this every year. You know, I don't really want to give you examples.
No, no examples, Jason.
But, but you, you're not wrong that it is a lot of work for all the people.
Like I can, I can give an example from maybe more generic examples from prior situations where you will have a follow-up. Like you'll say, the teacher needs to, I had a teacher who had to submit lesson plans on a weekly basis. Well, if you don't follow up and make sure that they're submitting those lesson plans or they're submitting them, but you're not actually opening them and looking at them, and then you find out the instruction is terrible, that's kind of on you as the supervisor. So, so I mean, this isn't something where you're running this on, you know, ten or fifteen employees at a time. You're, you're focused on like what, what's the most egregious thing that's happening? And, and in most cases, I feel like once this happens, a teacher's working hard to be like, oh, I didn't realize it was this problematic. And they, they don't want to be ineffective, like they really don't. And so that's horrifying to them. And so they will do what is, what is necessary to, to move forward. One of the other pieces that's in place is, and this was a point of clarification, lines three oh four to three oh five. It created some confusion because it says, nothing in this policy shall be construed to require compliance with or completion of evaluations prior to non-renewal of a career employee's contract. It means I don't have to go through the entire evaluation cycle to decide or provide my documentation to an employee that they're not performing at the level. If I go in and do a single observation of a teacher and I see something that's like, this is not up to our standards, I would document that, meet with the teacher, start putting them on a plan of assistance. So, so you can start doing that as soon as you're seeing something. You don't have to wait for that whole evaluation process to occur. And then lines three fourteen through, so then it goes through and talks about each type of employee and what the notice of intent has to look like. This is what we currently have, so this is nothing new. We can, notice of intent not to renew a contract of a career employee. Notice that once you're a career employee that you have to give them thirty days notice, has to be served in person. If you're terminating during their employment, during the term of contract, that's usually happening because of cause. So there's something really horrible that's happening at that particular point in time. And so then you would put the date of termination thirty days out from that notice. So you may put that person on, you know, paid admin leave and put in a substitute, and then you're gonna, and then the date of termination would be thirty days after that. But that's going to have to be something where you have pretty significant documented cause. And note too that depending on what it is in terms of those things that are listed for cause, we don't go to just termination. Like we do like a warning, we do an email, we do, we try lots of things before it goes to that level, so. You'll notice lines three fifty, we have not to offer a contract to a provisional employee. Just has to be sixty days before the end of their contract term, and you don't have to give a reason for why you're not renewing.
So question about that, I understand not everything here, but just how we handle it procedurally. I see this generally would happen more just we don't have a spot for them anymore. But if there was concern about their quality of teaching, things like that, do we do the same thing that you listed out for our contracted employees where we really work with them and say, here's what we need to see improve?
I definitely, I mean, yes, the idea is that you don't, you don't just say, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna non-renew you when a person has no idea why. They're working with an instructional coach, they should be given very specific feedback. And if that person just isn't making the changes or teaching just isn't for them, then that's when we would do the non-renewal process.
But we are working with them?
Yes.
Because those students in that classroom need.
Absolutely.
The teacher with the.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, who's a thing.
No, absolutely.
Okay.
Then a temporary employee, this is where our instructional assistants would fall. This is on lines three sixty to three sixty-five. So those are just hired on a yearly basis. So we just give them notice that they may not have a job or will not have a job the next year based on funding. based on funding. A lot of times, we end up hiring them back because funding becomes available, or because, you know, a school may end up with more TSSA money or something like that. But they don't have a right to go through a hearing or a grievance process, nor do provisional employees, even if they're contracted. The grievance process is for those career employees. If you don't give notice, the contracted... The provisional employee is assuming that they're going to have a job, and you have to follow that process of giving that notice. And otherwise, they have a right to assume that that job is going to be there.
Nice question. I mean, it just feels so painful to be like... I can see that you might want to just, if you're not sure about funding and you're not sure about budget, provide this notice just in case, right? Because the law says you have to by a certain date. But from an employee's perspective, that probably feels fairly jarring, right? To receive a notice saying you may not have a job. Do we have a date or a time limit by which that... How does that... Just so I understand?
Yeah, the state has required a couple of different time limits. So we usually have to require that the "may not" goes out around February 15.
Okay.
And that the "will not," if we don't know the information enough, has to be delivered by March 15.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to understand.
Schools that have done this traditionally, because like you mentioned, Title I schools have been expected to do this over their entire timeframe, that those employees receive this every year because federal funding might change.
Right.
So we work with employees to understand, "This isn't us. It's state law requirement. We want to make sure you understand. We value you," that kind of thing. But like you said, it's kind of fun to receive a letter saying you might not be required.
Well, and I think based on feedback that we received, the HR team last year revised those letters because they think it had... So that it was like, not like, "You don't have a job," but it was, "This is what's happening."
Here's the process.
Yeah, here's the process. And so they know that then, as that... They may, you know, know in May that, yep, they're going to want me to come back, or, you know, so they'll know those kinds of things. Their principals will be in touch with them.
Thank you. I just wanted those dates so that I...
Yeah. And then for those that are contracted career employees, and we're going to terminate their contract, they can... We have to advise them that they can request an informal conference with the superintendent or with the deputy superintendent. And then they can also require... They can also request a hearing as well. And then you as a board, that comes to you as a board. Generally, what would happen is you would have somebody that would gather the information and then present those findings to you, and then you would determine whether or not you were going to uphold that termination. That would happen in a closed session, obviously. And then if the employee is still dissatisfied, then they can appeal it in the courts if they don't like it at that point. I'm just sipping through this. The one question that came up was on line 452. It talks about a suspension during an investigation. Generally, our practice has been to put people on paid administrative leave. We feel like when we're not putting them on paid leave, there's an automatic implication of guilt, and that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to get findings and figure out what's going on. And so the law does allow us to do that. I just want you to know that that's not our practice. So we talked about, do we want to just change that to paid administrative leave during an investigation? So that's something that we'll take that back to the HR team to look at that. If there is a staff reduction that's happening, so our enrollment drops or something, and we have to... Reduction enforced, then none of these things, like you don't have a right to a hearing or those types of things. Note that in state law, it doesn't allow you to say, "Last one hired is the first one fired" anymore. And so that isn't a protection that specifically exists. And then there's no verbal agreement. So like, a person can't promise somebody a job. I worked in a situation where an individual had promised a person an assistant principal position, and they don't have the authority to do that. So we don't accept verbal agreements. It has to be from those individuals that are designated to get that. And then you as a board, you're approving all of those hirings and terminations and retirements and all of those pieces. If an individual is being terminated for cause, and it's a violation of the Utah educator standards, we are required to report that to UPAK. In some cases, that's already gone to UPAK because something's happened in the classroom, and a parent or a student has already reported it. And then we present like what our discipline has been, what our findings are. They will enact further, sometimes things on an individual's license. So we may say, "We've done a formal reprimand," and they may say, "This person's license is suspended for a year." So it just depends. Is there anything you want to add about that?
I think you can.
Okay. So that's the actual policy. Then what we... What had been in the procedure before, and we kept in the procedure, was so that employees would know what the corrective action is, what happens in a case of improper conduct versus unsatisfactory performance. So it just kind of lines out what that... That they have an opportunity to respond, that they're given due process if there's an accusation of this improper conduct. And then we work to deliver an appropriate level of corrective action if needed. And we try to do it, and you'll notice on lines 42 through 46, it can range from a verbal warning all the way up to a termination for cause, UPAK referrals. But often, when it's like a first-case scenario, and it's something that's more minor, we try to start with the least, you know, and try to be mentoring in that process. And then it can escalate if we don't feel that the employee is correcting it. And then it just lines out for unsatisfactory performance, and what that looks like in terms of the formal plan of assistance. If an employee gets back to an acceptable level of performance, but then within three years falls below, you can go ahead and terminate for cause at that point, as it goes back down. Any questions about this policy?
Yes. I think my question's in line with Terry's email, and it's for Jason. Do you feel like this is... Does this bring our policy, and I guess for you as well, more in line with, not more in line, but like with best practice for HR? Like, just HRs across the state or the nation?
I think that what this describes is what we've been practicing for quite a bit of time. I, you know, I think practice day to day as compared to what the state chooses to say is a policy can kind of be... And so this is more in line with what we are normal practices.
Thank you.
And this is in alignment with what I've seen in other districts as well. So we're recommending that we put the policy and the accompanying procedure on the website for input, and that we continue to ask for feedback from the associations. We know that they're on vacation. And so our thought was to bring this back for approval at the second board meeting in August, to give some time for people to just digest it. And there could still be some, you know, concerns about maybe this language feels too vague, and we can add more clarification so that people feel like it's fair, and that they understand what's being placed. Any questions? Okay. Now we're going to talk about health requirements and medical treatment. So this policy, it's an update. This policy used to have, I think it was seven different procedures. What Policy Committee decided to do was to push that into two procedures, and then I found an additional policy that's required on model policies, and it kind of fits with this. And so since this is a first reading, I just stuck it in as a procedure three, and then Policy Committee can wrestle with it some more. Basically, the policy just is... Instead, it used to be about administration of medication. Now we want to go towards medical treatment, more than just medication, because there's other things that are taking place. Also being, you know, administering emergency treatment and pieces like that. So we have developed procedures that are in alignment with this. There are some updates that are coming from the state as well, so that's also going to be why I'm recommending that we delay the final approval until I have those at the end of June. But so you'll see the policy there. Notice that lines 25 to 32, the school is consenting to deliver this medical treatment. It's kind of basically a type of your... A school is in loco parentis. They're in the place of the parent. We could bump that into the procedure if that makes more sense, and just keep the policy as part of that overview. So that's something, if you have thoughts about that, you can get that to the Policy Committee, and we can review that again. Then if you go down to start going through Procedure 1, this is all about prescription medication or emergency medication. And so it just talks about all of the requirements. And we combined our current procedures with what has been added in state law for clarification. And so just combined that. So it made it a little bit lengthier in that process. Notice that everything has to come in its original packaging. It has to have instructions. Notice it says on line 59, "One person should be assigned to the responsibility." Well, that's generally not possible, but it would be nice if it's a smaller number, because you're signing off every single time that that happens. Notice that on lines 66 through 70, it talks about elementary and middle school students are not to carry or self-administer medication unless it has been authorized. This is a part of the law that has changed in terms of student administration of medication. We're waiting for the update on what that looks like. It goes into effect July 1st. And so when you go in and actually look at the law, you'll see it's pulled down, and it will say it's been superseded by another piece on July 1st. So we're waiting for those pieces to be in place. Our school nurse provides the training for individuals that are administering medication. And that on lines 94, it shows that there's civil liability immunity, that as long as you are doing this in good faith and according to what, you know, a parent has asked you to do, and then if something happens, you're exempt from that liability. Then it goes in and talks about the specific administration of very specific types of medication and treatment. So glucagon, seizure rescue medication, which now also has seizure awareness training that is tied to it. Notice that for students that have diabetes, or that students that have seizures, they have like a rescue plan in place. That's part of their individualized healthcare plan. And the nurses training, individuals and teachers are informed of what those plans look like and what they need to do in specific situations. You all have probably gone through seizure awareness training as part of our Safe Schools policies, which I always have to do. Like, I don't know, because I can never keep track of the different kinds of seizures, and I always get those questions wrong. And then it has administration of adrenal crisis rescue medication, as well as asthma. And then you'll notice stock of butyral. When I talked with Heather Chatwin, the head of our nurses, she said, "We don't keep stock of butyral in our schools because most students who have asthma have very specific types that they use, and they keep them on hand." And so she said, "It really is so costly to figure out what that might look like." Note that in the law, it does not state that we have to have it in stock. It's just that we may, and so we have to have a policy in place in case somebody's trained to do that. Lines 365 through 385 have been crossed off because they're updating what that student self-administration... It's not just going to be for asthma medication. It would be for like diabetes, for EpiPens, for lots of different things that a student can self-administer, and some different age requirements. So that's part of why I would also like this to hold on a second reading until the second of August, because we would have all of those updates at that point in time. We do have administration of opiate antagonists, and most schools have at least one dosage of that. That's the recommended amount. I can ask Heather exactly how many are in each school. And then note that the application of sunscreen is forbidden unless a parent signs and allows for that to happen. You are not... You are liable if there is an adverse reaction, and you don't have parent permission to administer sunscreen. I learned that when I was a middle school principal. I did not know that that was a thing. And then I said, "Well, we're just going to put sunscreen on the kids. We're just going to buy a whole bunch of sunscreen and put it on the kids." And my school nurse came screaming, and I was like, "You can't do that!" And I was like, "Great lot." And so I was like, "I had no idea." And then medication sharing is prohibited. The other thing that's really important too is it has a piece in here where it states that when students have these drugs on them, it's not a violation of the Safe Schools policy. So that becomes important, that they won't get a Safe Schools citation if it's required by a medical professional. Procedure 2 is all about non-prescription medication. No changes. Completely the same. And then the DNR directives basically state that in some cases, there would be an instance where you have a student that's terminally ill, that would have a do-not-resuscitate order. It states the specific provisions in which a school employee may not be held accountable if they don't do that. But in general, our school employees are trained to go in and support and help and provide first aid, and that a parent can't come after an employee for doing that, even if a DNR order is in place. But that's just... That's just how we operate in a school. We're not keeping track of who gets it and who doesn't get it. It's just that's going to be our number one goal, is to go in and provide support and help and rescue for a particular student. So it just protects an employee if they do that, and you have a parent who's like, "Well, my kid had a DNR order. Why did you revive them?" They can't be in trouble without. So our recommendation on this one is we will place this on the website. We will update when the updates become available, send it back to Policy Committee, and I will make sure that Heather Chatwin still has her eyes on all of these pieces. So if she still has questions, then our recommendation is to put it at the latter August meeting.
It's from Terry. She asked, "Should consent to treat paragraph B in all participation forms parents have to sign? Should the school nurse have the DNR on file and chart results?"
Yes. Yes, they would. Okay, good.
Any other questions? And I believe, maybe Daryl knows the answer to this. I believe when they're in athletics, there is with the athletic trainer, a consent to treat form that comes in if the athletic trainer is looking at them. I believe that's part of their registration. It's part of UHS.
Yeah. All right.
Good to have Policy Committee.
Oh, that was so exciting.
Amazing. All right. We are going to move on to item 15, which is a review of our consent calendar. Any questions about that? I know that Terry had some questions, and she sent them out to Devin, who responded, so her questions got answered. Does anyone have any other questions?
My one question, I'd love at some point to maybe... Maybe it's not a conversation, but when I'm looking at our open enrollment and our homeschool reports, I just... I'm looking at the number from 2024-25, our homeschool total. And I'm just wondering, it's, you know, significantly higher from the year before, and I can understand a lot of the levers may be related to youth outfits all, but is there a way to gather input from some of those families to... Around the choice they're making and, you know, maybe that's not realistic, but I just would be curious to know if there's a way we could find out are there needs we could understand better, et cetera, in our system to retain some of those students?
That's a great question.
Obviously honoring the choice fully, but I just wonder, it's a large number, and so just something else.
Me, it can get tricky to get ahold of homeschool information, but we absolutely can. We could develop like a survey and just say, "Tell us what's going on. Why would you... Why are you choosing to take... To homeschool your kid, or why are you choosing to take them elsewhere?" I mean, we're losing a lot of kids also to charter schools, too.
Right. I just wonder if there are patterns dated there that could inform us.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can I just ask, maybe for Jason, just about personnel? Looking at that, like the ones that are released, like when there's one school maybe that has a larger amount, is that... That would include like just life changes, employees just leaving, right? Or I'm just trying to understand that when I looked at that.
Yeah, it does include all choices. And so several of those are at times people just having life changes. So yes.
Got it.
It's not differentiated in there as to why.
Okay. Or like, it's not necessarily a reduction in FTE, that type of stuff?
Right. We do a survey with our employees. The state, you know, expects a survey that we do with each of our teachers as they're leaving us to kind of why.
That's right.
That type of thing. So we have that information. It is... We do it as a carrot, not as a stick. So it's a... We do this, and we give you an Amazon gift card.
Yeah.
So not everyone just makes it. We do gather that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. We'll move on to item 16. It's just, you can check the board docs here for our upcoming calendar items. So tomorrow, we are meeting with some of our legislators at Los Hatch to show them the school, as well as to talk to them about education legislation. the school as well as to talk to them about education legislation. And that's for the 11th Thursday tomorrow. There's a school safety conference at the end of the week, Thursday and Friday. The district is observing Juneteenth on Monday. That's part of state, state observance, if they say the Monday near. Right. So, and then our next meeting.
We jump into that movement.
No, we're going to reschedule. We schedule the. Our next meeting of the board is our Tuesday, June 24th, study session and business meeting. And then as a reminder, we all take July off from these big meetings and things.
Right.
And hopefully, a lot of our district admin who work so hard are taking vacations and things. And so after that, then we, our next meeting will be in August 12th and the first day is August 14th. Any questions about the calendar? Anything you missed? All right. So we have a motion to adjourn our study session.
Will we adjourn our study session?
Okay. Motion made by Vice President Mills. We are adjourned and we will begin our business meeting at 7:00 PM in PBC.
I don't even have to fight over that. I'm slowly making my way there. So sorry, see, this is why we need, why we need Terry to be here.
We didn't really do the health, we're looking at the faculty and safety here right now, but we had talked actually about possibly showing them.
Okay. Still 400. Those are kids are choicey now. They're another.